So special we don't even do the flags.
No, I don't have to. We need to.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Straskey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Here.
So, first item of business, discussion on possible action to adopt a resolution superseding Resolution Number 2016-10 calling for election and Resolution 2016-11 consolidating election with Mendocino County to add newly required acknowledgment pursuant to Election Code, Section 10, 418. I hope somebody just researched the heck out of this.
I'm not approving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any public discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Straskey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Here.
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Sure, yes. So, next item is something John Sherman has his name on, but I don't see John here, but I'm sure Adrian has answered any questions, which is renewal of a contract with Mendocino Janitorial for services at the police department. Looked to me like it's the same as last year, been the same for some time.
I have a question. Have we recently or whenever gone out to bid or, you know, offered this to anybody rather than over a month?
We haven't passed. It's been problematic because we have to vet the people that are doing that. So for us, you know, having to fingerprint them and so that there lays the problem. You invest some time and money into checking folks out.
Yes.
And unless they're not working out, it's a lot easier to go with that.
Any else?
I shall move.
I'll second.
Any public comment? Oh, yeah. Yes, sir, please sign in.
My name is Bill Barksdale. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This has to do with both this contract and the second one that's going to be coming up so I don't have to get up twice and you listen to me say the same thing over again. Has to do with paragraph 26, and I'm assuming that this is in here this way because this is an old agreement that hasn't been reviewed by your council, but under equal opportunity employment, you've left out sexual orientation and identity and marital status and under California Government Code, Section 12, 940, those are protected classes that should be included in this, in this and all agreements. So I'm going to ask that you do one of two things. Either not approve these two contracts today and wait until this paragraph 26 is amended so that it complies with California state law, or approve it subject to an addenda being added to the contract that amends paragraph 26 so that protected classes are properly included. Thank you.
And we can do the latter very easily.
Do you already have a motion and second on that?
Adding to the current California code language.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so we already had a motion and a second on, as written, can we just offer a friendly amendment to include that?
Yes.
And as a second or a final?
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Straskey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Sure. Same thing, janitorial services for city offices.
I would be happy to move contracting with the same change upon paragraph 26 to contract with Mike Sorato.
Second.
Any public comment? Any other comment?
Yeah, again, well, I mean, there was a specific reason for the police janitorial and the need for more security. This is a two-year contract, I believe, is that correct? Or is it only one year?
Says sixteen to seventeen.
Okay, so it's only one year. And obviously, we need to move ahead now for the coming fiscal year, but I think, given the fairly large amount of money that we're devoting to janitorial services, I would just like to make sure that there is an opportunity for competitive bidding if it's feasible to do that from the following fiscal year.
We didn't do a formal bidding, but we did contact a number of janitorial services.
For this year?
Yes.
And this is competitive?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Straskey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. So, we're still working on the budget. Adrian, this is, this next action is a resolution authorizing continuation of the existing budget for some short period of time.
Right, we anticipate it being not more than a month. Plan on bringing the budget to the council on July 13th. Normally, we cancel the first meeting in July because of the Fourth of July frontier days. However, it's well past that, and since we had canceled the regular meetings in June to, I think, in part due to council members' availability or lack thereof, but also because we were working on the budget. We have a number of variables this year that have not quite solidified, one of which is we've made a big change in our health benefits plan. And so, we're still looking at different scenarios and trying to, you know, there's no point in bringing forward a budget that doesn't have solid numbers. So we're just needing a little bit more time to get those things nailed down and bring them to you on July 13th, and then again on July 27th, where, you know, usually it's a two-step process. It's not required to be a two-step process, I don't believe, but that's historically what we've done.
Can you clarify that that meeting where we talk about the budget will kind of be a workshopping meeting where?
That will be the main event. It will be a regular city council meeting. In years past, we've done finance committee reviews, but about three years ago, we moved away from that because that's two members of the city council. The recommendations that come out of that could really swing, you know, from one spectrum to the opposite end, depending on who those two, it's the mayor and the vice mayor that sit on that committee. And then it has to go back to the full council for, you know, thorough review and can go through quite a few more changes at that point. So the practice that we put in place about three years ago was just taking it to the full council for a budget workshop. This year, we've had a lot of challenges with being severely understaffed at City Hall, and that's had an impact on our abilities, you know, to move this forward. But then, as I said, we have a number of variables that simply we weren't able to pin down, and that was beyond our control. So we're waiting for those numbers to settle into place and bring it back to a meaningful document.
So, yeah, people want, if members of the public want to contribute to the conversation, they could come to that meeting?
Yes, absolutely. You know, I'm sure we'll have a consent calendar on there and maybe some other things, but we are planning on the budget being the main event for July 13th.
Just wanted to clarify, when you were suggesting it be kind of a workshop format, do you want to consider, instead of us sitting up here in public commenting, you know, as we do on public hearing items, having it be more of a roundtable and go through section by section so that people can comment as we go, that kind of thing?
I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure that that is the main topic of conversation as far as, I'm fine with however staff wants to set up the meeting and the mayor, but I just wanted to make sure that for the public's point of view, that if they want to weigh in, that's their time to do it.
Yes.
Well, I would just like to add that if we do, if we do it in this configuration, as we usually do our meetings, that the public get a chance to comment as we go on items that are of interest, rather than, you know, they have their three minutes and then we're up here for another hour and a half making decisions. I think it's really important to have, to have it be more closer to where, and when we're discussing an item, for them to be able to say, well, I feel strongly.
What I'd certainly be willing to do is do that.
As we go.
Well, on a line item to the budget, so we, when we're discussing enterprise fund, sewer enterprise fund, we'll have that discussion here at the council level, and then I'll take public comment on the sewer fund or water fund or whatever I just said, and then we'll move on to, you know, move on to the other one. So I don't think we're, it's not going to be a free exchange, just jump in whenever you feel like you have an urge to speak, but we will break it down into its different departments and we'll take, have a set aside time for public comment on each department.
Thank you, that was my intent, okay.
So, I still would then look for the resolution authorizing continuation.
I'll second.
Comment like to weigh in on that? Public would like to weigh in on this? Come back in two weeks or whatever that is. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Straskey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Okay, yeah, sure. So, this next item is on the role and future of Mendocino Solid Waste Management. Ron, you brought this?
Yeah.
It's like I've seen your signature on some of this stuff. What kind of brought this on, Ron, and why are we?
Yeah, I was going to give a little background on it. At our last ESWO meeting about a month ago, I believe, we've been discussing this, the coast transfer station at the ESWO board, and we've gotten into a lot of detail about that. But as it turns out, well, it didn't turn out, it was very apparent that the ESWO board really didn't have a whole lot to say about the transfer station because this was strictly a deal between the county and the city of Fort Bragg. And the only reason that ESWO board was even involved in it is because the general manager, Mike Sweeney, is, he has a dual role. He's also the county solid waste administrator, and he is the general manager of ESWO. So as his role as the county administrator, he was involved in the discussion and in the planning and everything that went through with it. So by connection, that's kind of got the ESWO board involved as well. But there was also another connection, whereas about a year ago, I believe, maybe two years, we were asked, the board was asked to approve a $100,000 loan in case it was needed to prepare the EIR. And that was approved. The money was kind of dedicated in the budget, but it was never spent. And as it turned out, we learned a few months ago that the money was not needed. But there was that connection, and we were on the hook for something. So we were having this discussion about something we really didn't have to discuss. Anyway, that led to a broader question, and this was a discussion going on at the ESWO board meeting. And the broader question was, well, what exactly does ESWO do? And why was it formed? Is the reason that it was formed still pertinent? And should we revisit it? Should we just look at it and see if it's still, you know, viable model? So that's what prompted.
So the ESWO board determined that it wanted to check its charter and check?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah.
Was there a specific motion by the board?
No, it was sort of like a head nod, as I recall. Tom, is that correct? It was not a formal action. A head nod, yeah. It was not, you know, it wasn't a formal action, it was kind of a, the way the discussion was going, there was a lot of questions about ESWO, what was going on, what we were doing, and what our purpose here was, and that kind of thing. So, you know, I suggested that we should agendize the item and talk about it, which is what we did. And actually, the item will be discussed tomorrow. But prior to tomorrow's ESWO meeting, I wanted to bring it to the council to get your input. And in that regard, several things happened. One is Jerry Ward prepared a memo for me that I shared with the council, and it's in the packet for the ESWO meeting tomorrow. And this is the, I guess, the second letter in your packet. It's addressed to the city council from me, subjecting the future of ESWO. And everything that's written here is pretty much what Jerry had laid out, with, you know, little editorial refinements, if you will. But this kind of lays out what ESWO does currently, and if there is an alternate universe, if we, I mean, as we see it, there's two ways we could go. One is we could continue with ESWO as it is, and the other is to maybe disband it and, you know, take all the functions that are being covered by ESWO now and distribute them among the waste haulers. And believe me, what I'm giving you right now is a very loose explanation because none of this has been discussed or talked about. There's a lot of moving parts we have to work with. But to prepare for tonight's meeting, I had tomorrow's ESWO agenda packet relating to this question duplicated and distributed to all of you. And in that packet, the packet includes the JPA agreement and some other information. So as I was going through all this stuff over the last couple of days, I realized there's a lot of information, and again, I prepared one of my lists. And this was distributed to you tonight. This is a single page that's entitled, "ESWO Notes for Meetings 629 and 630." And basically, what this does is it points out the, some of the bullet points, some of the high points of everything that we're talking about to kind of frame the discussion and see what we're saying. So for example, just for background, the ESWO JPA was formed in October of 1990 for the purpose of citing license, and this is reading directly from the agreement, citing, licensing, developing, constructing, maintaining and operating ESWO disposal sites or sanitary landfills, and to prepare a solid waste management plan and all other appropriate powers reasonably necessary to carry out the purposes of this agreement. So one of the questions that, of course, needs to be considered is, do we still need the JPA to form disposal sites, landfills, transfer stations, or any of that stuff? Or are we pretty much where we want to be? And if so, do we need to keep it in this current model?
Ron, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So we, I got the second, there was, it was in our packet, and then we got the second thing that you had mentioned. So what is the difference between what we got yesterday, or yesterday and what's in the packet? What was the additional information?
Well, what's in the, what we, all right, say that again?
What is the difference between the packet that we got and the amended?
This little sheet?
No, we got the amended thing that was delivered to us. You were saying that?
They weren't, yeah, we were missing every other page.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, because I was, I mean, I was looking at these and thinking, okay, they look exactly the same.
Yeah, well, they're, yeah, they're back to back, and half the pages weren't duplicated.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just for the record, you know, just to start off the conversation on the right foot, I'm not in any way, nor is anybody else advocating that we disband ESWO. That's not the question. But there are certain things that are going on that do require some looking at. For example, under, at the bottom here, under other points of interest on the single page I'm looking at, we have a few things that I kind of knew about, but not a whole lot, and, you know, I still kind of wonder. For example, there's a contract that ESWO has with the county that totals over $99,000, and this is to provide contract administration and other duties as the county solid waste director. And this is the exact wording from the agreement, which is kind of strange when you think about it, because they're using the term contract with ESWO, providing contract administration, and then mention the duties as a county solid waste director, which is not necessarily ESWO. It's a person. It's a person that holds an office. So, you know, there's a little discrepancy there, and I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I can't imagine contract administration, you know, being involved with more than one person or two people. And there's only five people who work for ESWO, by the way. Now, in addition to that, the ESWO general manager receives a salary from ESWO. So I'm not inferring anything, but there's a lot of money that's being spent by the jurisdictions and by the ratepayers to support some of these activities from ESWO.
So how much are the ratepayers of the city of Willets paying?
Well, I don't know.
I think I know.
Yeah, well, actually, it's that $5 a ton surcharge, right?
On 400 tons?
Thirty-three hundred.
Thirty-three hundred tons. So we're, our financial contribution to ESWO is 16,500?
Yeah. And, you know?
Out of their $700,000 to $900,000?
Well, yeah, this year it's going to be closer to six, I think. But, you know, because it's about that, it's been 900. There's five employees, and the payroll is about $225,000, plus there's a SEP IRA plan, which is worth about $32,000. And then, ESWO also receives $7,000 for the Willetts transfer station contract fee, and that comes from you, I believe, correct? And then there's also a bunch of grants that have traditionally been part of the budget. So, you know, I have to be honest, I'm not sure where to go with this thing, and that's why I brought it to you guys, you know, I need some input, and I think Jerry might have something to add to this as well. I mean, he probably knows this better than most of us.
I would hope so.
So how do you, I mean, you know, that's the broad brush strokes of the whole thing.
So you're concerned that our $16,500 is being spent?
No, I wasn't being specific with 16,000 or any.
But that's what, that's what we have.
Well, that's what it comes down to.
That's what we have on the table. That's our skin in the game.
Um, yeah.
Is there some other?
No, no, I guess that's the thing. And, but I guess in a broader sense, we are part of a countywide JPA, and, you know, I don't know, maybe it's something that needs to be changed, or it could be revised or modified for the good of all. No, we don't have that much in it. You're right.
Any comments up here at this point, right now?
No, we're listening to what the audience has to say and what Jerry has to say.
Jerry, did you, did you want to?
Yeah, I got some.
Sure. Jerry's our, the solid waste of Willets.
Pick up all that nasty stuff.
He's our trash line.
Thank you, Jerry Ward, solid waste of Willets. I wanted to add, Ron pretty much covered it, but another reason this thing came up was Mike Sweeney is considering retiring as well.
You're right.
We thought it might be a good opportunity at that point to look at a model to see if there's some, if there would be a better change to it. Of course, the, most of the things that ESWO does, most of the haulers can do currently, CNS Waste out of UCAIA is doing household hazardous waste collection in Lake County. They do litter collection, they do illegal dump pickups for Lake County, they do, they also do reporting, maybe 939 reporting for the county of Lake. So a lot of that could be done here in Mendocino County as well. And so, I, like Ron, I'm not here to disband ESWO, but it could be more than advisory committee of the jurisdictions getting together and talking about different legislation coming up, like mattress recycling or the plastic bag ordinances and things like that, and put that information out to the city managers or the city councils and the board supervisors, and try to implement those programs with their hauler. But the services that they provide, the haulers can do that. Now, whether Willetts pays 16,500 or $25,000, what are you getting of your benefit? And are they, are they doing things on behalf of the city that would, that justifies that kind of cost? Probably so, but it could easily be done with the same amount of money with a private enterprise doing it. The state of California has a sunset review clause in the state legislature, the state legislature came up with, where they have a sunset review committee that looks at all their departments, agencies, and whatnot, every few years, to see if they're still cost-effective and whether they're actually needed. And that's all we're trying to do here with ESWO. Is there a better plan? Is there a better model? The mission statement has been very convoluted. We don't know what they do. Mike's got several different hats, Mike Sweeney, your general manager. He negotiates on behalf of Willetts for contracts. He's interjected himself in UCAIA. The mission, we had this discussion a few months back, we don't always want Mike in all these positions, but he keeps interjecting himself into it. And so the board, the commission, a few months back, maybe a year ago, said, well, if the agency asks for his help, he can come in and ask. Well, I just got a contract extension in Brookfrost. Denise Rose didn't call Mike. Mike called her and asked if he could help. She says, no, we can handle it. Chris Neary's reviewing the agreement and everything's fine. He says, well, you realize that Jerry's only paying 7% franchise fee, and the city of Willets is 12. You could get another 5% out of Jerry for no problem. I'm thinking, why are you getting involved in something like that when Denise never even contacted you? So that's upsetting to me as a contractor to see that. It's very convoluted that he's also the solid waste director, and he works on behalf of the county, and then he works on behalf of ESWO, too. I don't know the difference. I'm going in through larger rate adjustments with the county, and two of the ad hoc committee members for the county are also commission members for ESWO. So there's no break there. I would like to see something happening there as well. And mission creep, we talk about government and mission creep. This has been a real big mission creep on behalf of ESWO, and I think it just needs to be looked at and see if there's a better way of dealing with it. This coastal transfer station, like Ron mentioned, has been a real problem, too. I don't think it should be built. I think it's ineffective, but yet they're spending, you know, several thousands of dollars on EIRs, and it's probably not going to get built, but it's a waste of money, in my part. But there again, ESWO got involved because they were going to guarantee a $100,000 loan. He also is the contract administrator for the Willetts transfer station. It didn't say, it said the solid waste director in the contract 15 years ago. Now the money goes to ESWO. It was never supposed to go to ESWO. So these kind of things, it just needs to be re-looked at, dealt with, and come up with a new plan. If we keep the status quo and hire a new city man, excuse me, a general manager when Mike retires, so be it, but I think it's a golden opportunity to at least look at what ESWO does and is there a better way of doing it. For instance, we have the household hazardous waste program, and the housing bill goes around the county. How often does it come to Willets? Three, four times a year? We have 10 transfer station sites in the county, but we're advocating with CNS Waste is that anybody could bring any hazardous waste to any one of our transfer stations the days we are open. In the case of Willets, it's five days a week. You don't have to wait four years or four times a year to take it in. You can bring it to our site. We take sharps, we take medications, we can do all that, and then we do a milk run to collect. That must be much cheaper than what we're doing today. But those kind of things need to look at. And I don't have, I don't have the answers tonight, but we could certainly provide those proposals.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, but on that point, the hazardous waste, we received a letter from Mike pointing out certain things. And one of the things that he did bring up was the special training that the hazardous waste workers are required to have. So, how do you feel about that with what you just proposed?
Well, my site attendants are trained in lots of things now, and they have to be, even to be a buyback recycling center person to take you, they have to go to a school in Sacramento now. So, it's nothing new that we can't add to our site attendants to do. And we have the facility, storage facilities to accept. We do electronics, we do tires, batteries, cell phones. We already collect household hazardous waste now through our load checking program. So, it's something we can accommodate. But for seven-hundred thousand dollars a year, is there a better way? That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's all I wanted to bring up and answer any questions. But I'm not here advocating that we disband it, maybe as keeping it as an advisory committee and seeing if there's other things we can do through, using the RFP process, to see if we can come up with a better way of providing these services cheaper to the ratepayer. Five dollars a ton does add up. I mean, it's a whole lot of money over the county, the whole county.
So, just as a point of information, let's, just what if? If we were to dissolve the Emswa organization and reconfigure it using the waste haulers as, you know, as the vehicle, do you see in any way where the ratepayers could be given some sort of relief? That maybe we save some money?
Yeah, I talked to, I've been talking to CNS Waste, because they have the same interests that you're here. Going to hear from them tomorrow as well. But we realize that anything that would come up, we'd have to do it cheaper. Otherwise, it's not worth it. And they said they can. And they're willing to also, since their yard is right across the street from the hazardous waste facility in Ukiah, they would take on the property and the debt and utilize the same facility. They hired one of the technicians from Mike Sweeney's staff a couple of years ago, and he has now, like I said, started the program in Lake County. He could easily run into Mendocino County, and they were saving money. Lake County is saving money as well.
So, of course, I mean, there's a lot of analysis that would have to be made, you know, looking into all the budgetary items, things like that-
Sure, sure.
-to really come up with some understanding. But, if, I understood what you just said, it's possible that a change in the setup could possibly result in a savings to the ratepayers?
That would be the intent.
Okay.
And if we don't, it's probably not going to be worth looking at. And then, the other thing regarding to the grants, we are, some days I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm in a nonprofit organization, too. We looked into that and felt that we could, we could form a nonprofit organization to apply for the grant fundings that he gives for beverage recycling, tire amnesty programs, those kind of things. So, that can be dealt with as well. Or, Emswa as an advisory committee could still continue applying for grants as well.
So, and again, you know, there's a lot of questions that I'm sure everybody has to consider. Let's say, again, we use option two, and we disband Emswa. What would be the relationship, as you see it, between you and the other waste haulers and the different cities, you know, the jurisdictions? How would that work? Right now, you kind of work, well, you kind of work for your local jurisdiction, you know, you work with us, but you also work with Emswa.
Yes.
So, how do you see that?
As far as the services that are provided?
Well, the services, the requirements, complaints, you know, whatever, whatever comes up.
Well, usually, if there's a complaint within the city, they'll call Adrian.
Maybe I shouldn't have said complaints.
And if there's an issue, you know, we take, we take those issues every day on the phones. We cover more than half of the county as it is, so we deal with those things. But, it would have to be one entity probably coming in and taking over the facilities and the services, but utilizing our facilities as a milk run, where we would provide those avenues for them to do it. Just like Emswa comes in and uses Kovalo as our transfer station site, which we operate. They set up there, and we would do it the same way.
So, you're saying, like, for instance, and I think we discussed this, let's say, for example, if you became the lead agency in this new world, you would contract with the other haulers to get the whole job done, and you would be the point person?
We would be the responsible agency. But I would think our contract administration would stay with the jurisdictions. The litter and illegal dumps pickups, we would take care of our own areas. There's cleanups on the creeks and those kinds of things that we would continue to do, that we do, as we do today. So, yeah, those things would just continue.
Okay.
And what is a milk run? Sorry, you said?
A milk run would be where the truck goes around just collecting on a weekly basis or every other week or month, depending on the volume.
Goes back to the day when there were milkmen going around.
The garbage man does that now.
Jerry, we were provided in this correspondence that you're talking about CNS Waste providing that service in Lake County. I guess everybody, we're all looking at the same thing. I mean, the information we're getting saying that CNS billed them seventy-three thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars for fourteen-hundred-and-nineteen customers.
For Lake County?
Yeah, previously, Emswa had billed them sixty-seven thousand five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars for fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-five customers, or it was, so it was forty-four dollars for Emswa per customer and fifty-two dollars for that. I mean, obviously, you have a review.
No, I don't have that information, but I'm sure they'll be discussing that tomorrow.
And just for the public, we have that letter from Emswa, and we also received a letter from the city of Fort Bragg, from the Fort Bragg city. No, I'm sorry, from Dave Turner, from the city of Fort Bragg as well. We're going to, well, I assume we're going to hear from some other public-
Well, he's still the mayor, so you might have to talk to him.
Well, I mean, just, anybody we will hear from, I mean, Mike just walked in. He probably hasn't been here for the whole conversation yet, so I'm sure he'd be interested in what's already been said. But, anybody wanting to weigh in up here?
Yes. I, when we negotiated our contract with Willet Solid Waste, I was very, very concerned, along with some of the other council members, about the recycling of the green barrels with the food waste that is in it, and to see how that would work. And I thought that the information that Mike brought us was very interesting to me and was very helpful. And in that particular aspect, I thought that it was really worth everything that I had expected it to be, because I had not all the facts that I needed. And I thought that with Coal Creek doing the green barrels with the waste in it, the food waste in it, was a really good idea. And I think that it kind of helped, at least for three votes, to get the three votes to make, not make, but pass Jerry to do that. And so, in that part, I thought that it was a really good idea. The other thing is, I would like to know who is going to do the grants if we have a site that is a toxic site, and the government, and the state and the federal government have projects out there and money that they can get to clean them up, and who would be doing that? That would be another part, point that I would have. And the other part is that I just think that the, that the whole setup needs some kind of an oversight to have somebody, and I know that if there's something happens in our community, I go to the city manager and ask her to look into it or whatever. And then, if I disagree, then I would go up from there or whatever. But I'm just saying that I think that there needs to be something set up where there's another group of people or one person or whatever that can look into it to keep everybody honest. That's the best I can put it.
Ed?
Well, I would still like to hear from some other people, and also, I can't read these memos at the same time that we're listening to everybody. So, I want to do more homework than I have been able to do tonight. But in general, I think I agree with Larry that it's important to have a public interest person who oversees what's going on in our county. And I did find Mike to be very helpful when we were in the process of renewing our contract. Not only financial considerations, but all the state law information that keeps changing. And, you know, I don't expect our staff at the city to be up to step on that. And I wouldn't really expect an advisory board of laymen who represent a bunch of different jurisdictions to be up to that either. And I think it's important to have that role continue. If there are some ways to economize on some very specific services, that's something I think is worth looking at. But I would be really very hesitant to turn over the whole thing without a very adequate public review staff person at the JPA level that represents all of the jurisdictions on that.
Holly, you care to weigh in now, or you just-
I will wait.
Wait? I mean, maybe a short discussion? You know, again, I, one of the controlling parts for me here is that it's sixteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars, which, you know, do I, one of the, am I cavalier about spending that money? No, I don't think so. But I think that, that is, it's difficult, I think, to go, to go a different direction with this and maintain the same priorities and the same goals. If we wanted to have this conversation, whether we should be collecting household hazardous waste or we ought to just be letting it go into the landfill, I could have that conversation and say that, you know, we have superline landfills, and the landfills are privately owned, and they'll, you know, I'd be more apt to have that discussion and take an alternate route than to have this discussion of whether we can put something in place that is more effective with our sixteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And, and I, you know, I do think, I mean, we, you can conceivably, you know, our contract comes up supposedly every fifteen years, but there seems to be periodic reopeners for hardship or, you know, special situations that seem to arise. And, you know, as we, as we contract out for expertise in negotiating our labor contracts, I suppose we could go out and contract independently for that expertise to make sure that we're up to speed on the issues that are relevant to those times when we do negotiate. That we seem to have available to us at our fingertips at this point, if we want it. Whether that, you know, if, when that service is no longer provided to us or we no longer have that institutional knowledge that is there, or it's just a set of books that somebody has to thumb through and find, then maybe we need to, you know, need to look at that. But I just, you know, I think we're under a series of mandates to do this diversion stuff. And it doesn't seem to me to really rise to a critical level of concern at this point, to me. So, that's kind of, it's, who goes? Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? It'd have my full attention. Sixteen thousand dollars, it does not have my full attention as a, that it's a critical, you know, it's a critical expense given the constraints that we really want to talk about this, you know, that we want to have, we want to reclaim that. You know, you guys wanted to have food waste in the deal. I mean, those are priorities for you guys up here to have some of those things. Not necessarily my priorities, but that is the way most people think. And, you know, and this is the system that's been put in place to address that. And, you know, if Jerry wants to bring us a proposal to do it for nothing or pay us twenty thousand dollars a year for the right to take it, then I'm always, certainly, open to listening to, you know, those kinds of things. But it just doesn't seem like there's a substantial incentive for anybody to get too excited about it. Mike, would you, you know, we do have your letter here. Jerry made a little presentation that you caught the tail end of, but I'm certainly, or Tom, would you?
Yeah, I'll go first, actually, you're building Emswa. Thank you, council. My name's Tom Woodhouse, your third district supervisor. And I sit on the Emswa and the ad hoc negotiating with Jerry Ward. At our Emswa meetings, I've been very clear in making sure that Jerry has a voice there, because he has so much knowledge about this. And I don't stand up without complimenting him and thanking him, and I will tonight, too, for the quality operation that he runs. We're very lucky to have him, and in our contracts, we guarantee that we will help him stay profitable so he can survive. And we are working on that seriously. And I am bending as much as I can as far as reaching that goal, as well as being fair to the ratepayers, to whom a few dollars a month might mean a lot more than it does to you or I. So, it is complicated, and we're looking at the challenge of negotiating and getting something survivable and successful for Jerry to complement what he's given us, and we hope he will for the long term of the future. Those aren't just words. That's where I'm coming from. At the same time, having the history and the support and the facts coming from Emswa has been very helpful to me, very proud to be on that board and learn about the things they're trying to do with prescription drugs and diverting dangerous prescription drugs from the water streams and a lot of things that private business will not do, struggling with pharmacies. They don't want to collect up all this stuff and have added costs. But having a small government agency advocate for and get grants does create a scene that allows these things that I think most of us believe in to happen. And that all is accomplished with the cooperation and work of Jerry Ward as well. So, we will have a healthy discussion tomorrow, and I think we may come to a similar conclusion. Everyone will be able to speak their mind. And I appreciate, I think I see where the council here is coming from. I'm definitely not into disbanding it, and that doesn't seem to be the focus of anyone here. But if there are alternatives to get people a better deal and save money, of course, we want to discuss them. One thing I want us to keep in mind is that all the new marijuana laws coming down are going to have environmental monies to us to clean up some of the mess out there. Emswa is perfectly poised to partner with our haulers and clean up that and get the grants and advocate if that costs the county some money to get our shares, it will turn into hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have a huge environmental nightmare out there. I've been very proud of Jerry. Every time we have any kind of cleanup, is there the dumpsters, is there supplies? No questions asked? Yes, yes, yes. So, that's incredible. We have a partner here that's very rare and very incredible. And I want to thank Mike Sweeney for his partnership and giving us the facts. And we'll have a good discussion tomorrow, and Ron can report back to you. Sorry, Councilman Ornstein. Ron can report back to you, sorry, Councilman Ormstead can report back to you in the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Mike?
Thank you, Mike Sweeney, ENSWOW general manager. I will just briefly pick up on a couple of things that Tom Woodhouse alluded to. The grants, it's been quite an opportunity for us locally to tap into the Caltrans cycle grant system. There's a large number of grants ranging from beverage containers, oil, illegal dump cleanups, and they're only offered to local government. Some of them are small amounts that ENSWOW has been able to aggregate to make a reasonable amount, to make it worth our while. Others are specialized competitive grants, where we have to go up against every other jurisdiction in California. We've been fairly successful at doing that. I think, I did a calculation that presently we're working under $400,000 worth of grants that we've tapped into. And Tom alluded to the marijuana program, and I think that's a great opportunity right there because there's a grant program, again, offered only to local government agencies, not to private business, that addresses illegal dumps, and it can be marijuana grow sites. So I'm working with Tom Allman to try to identify and put together a grant application that would potentially accelerate the work we can do in cleaning up after irresponsible marijuana operations. We are presently working on a $200,000 grant in the very northern edge of Mendocino County to clean up forest land that was illegally subdivided and dumped on by marijuana growers. So I think that's a growing need, that we can, if we have the right vehicle and the right specialty to go after those Caltrans cycle grants, we can do a lot about that. One of the other things that Tom mentioned was the current discussions we're having about Jerry Ward's application for rate increases from the county. Now, and the reason why I want to mention that is because it's been a real challenge to do the work, the investigation, to evaluate those things, and to make the determination that Tom alluded to. It's where, on the one hand, it's important for us to do what we can to maintain the financial stability of solid waste of bullets, yet on the other hand, that comes out of the pocketbook of the ratepayers. And if the fixed rate that is in our contracts is going to be changed, then there has to be due diligence so that we know what changes should be made and recommended to the board supervisors. There's been a tremendous amount of work. The file I have is about that big on all the investigations, the things we've weighed. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because it occurs to me that the point Tom's making is valid in this case, in that it requires a specialized knowledge of the industry, the ins and outs, and not only the present situation, what's likely to develop in the future, and the history. You know, we've had, I've been at ENSWOW for 22 years as the general manager, and there's been a lot of stuff that's happened that time that I've been able to retain and catalog, and I hope to pass that on to a future ENSWOW general manager, so they, on behalf of the jurisdictions, will have the best information, the best understanding of the solid waste industry as they deal with our public utility, private franchisees. It's not just an exceptional case, such as we're dealing with because of SWOW's applications now, but on a regular basis, the contracts that you have for franchise contracts, and the county has in the other cities, they're adjusted annually according to four or five adjustment factors. So very complex calculations based on CPI, fuel, recycling commodity index, pass-throughs from other jurisdictions. Sometimes the pass-throughs are against us, in the case of Fort Bragg right now, in the county out in the Fort Bragg area, the pass-throughs are in our favor, so we have to get credit for that. And it's a challenging thing, even though I've been doing it, and I helped create some of those indexes, it's challenging for me to be able to do it accurately in a timely fashion on an annual basis. And I wouldn't want the jurisdictions to lose that specializability. Beyond that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and I appreciate very much the comments that some of you have made about ENSWOW's work in the past.
Ron, do you have anything? Do you have a sufficient amount of direction for a discussion tomorrow?
Not exactly. I mean, I heard what everybody said, but can you summarize, or are you suggesting that we drop the idea, or that we look into the possibilities or the options? I didn't quite get that.
Well, I'm not sure that we're...
When I say "we," I mean the board.
Yeah, we, the council, are ready to opt in or opt out, or ready to go anywhere on that. I guess it's kind of a, you know, I would suggest you have your meeting and report back to us what the wind, which way the wind's blowing in that arena. Like, I think I've made my position kind of...
And was there anyone else in the public before?
Are you afraid to say something before?
No, I'm just saying, I see some other faces, I just wanted to make sure.
Well, you know...
Because I do have some thoughts.
All right, well, I'll be glad to give you the benefit of everybody's knowledge out here by asking for public comment before Holly shows...
Oh, I'm really not saying anything interesting.
Second, third, and last call, it's all yours.
I was just going to say that, you know, when Ron brought this up, it brings to mind, you know, the bureaucracy and the institutions that we have, and I appreciate that you're evaluating the entities that exist. I think that that's a worthwhile, I mean, that's something the government should do every once in a while, is check in on, you know, what their mission is and how it's being met. I certainly hear the frustration about some confusion over the, you know, the hats that the general manager has, that makes sense. It seems to me that that could be dealt with at the ENSWOW board level, clarifying those roles as far as what the policy is, as far as when we could get involved with negotiations or not. But I pretty much agree with everyone else that I think as an organization, ENSWOW has brought in a lot of grant dollars, they're running, you know, financially a decent ship, it appears. And I think we would be hard pressed to get the same amount of efficiency for our, you know, for our current dollars. It's always worthwhile to look at things and to see if we could be doing them better, but in this instance, I don't think that removing this, I think it would hinder the checks and balances there in the system. So I wouldn't want to move forward.
Well, we're not, yeah, I mean, I'm not asking to move forward, I just want to get a sense of where people are.
Well, I'd say this, and I do compliment him on another point as well, is that from time to time, as a council member on a regional board, whether it be ENSWOW, or LAFCO, or MCOG, you know, there's times when, you know, we certainly expect our representative to vote with their best intentions of the city in mind, but I think it, you know, there are occasionally major policy decisions that some of those boards are apt to make, and it is good and fair, I think, at that point, that you need to bring those, as you see them coming up, bring those back, and you need to speak the voice of the council at those meetings, not your individual perspective. So, you know, if that comes around to where there is a vote at the ENSWOW board to whether to, you know, disband it and give it back to a local entity, I'd expect that to come back to all of the serving jurisdictions and get a real solid presentation and a vote, you know, but I think it, you know, needs to, it could start at the local level, you know, I mean, we could do a Brexit, you know, I mean, pull out of ENSWOW and see if the union collapses or not, but, you know, I think what you're asking is a reasonable question, and I agree that it's relevant to check in from time to time. You know, I was around when ENSWOW was formed, or darn near, I was chair of ENSWOW, starting in '92 or '93 or something, and did six or eight years in it, and it did have a different charter to it initially, that was a different issues, but '93, '99 came along, and mandatory recycling came along, and we were looking for tools to implement those things, and it was kind of a natural evolution that we had an entity that represented all the interests of the county. You know, and one by one, the landfills fell by the wayside in the county, you know, to where there are none, to my knowledge, left at all. So, you know, this had an evolutionary aspect to it, whether it wants to, whether it's purposeful to grow into, to cite remediation of, for whatever kind of issues, you know, we can deal with that as it comes to pass. Anybody else want to toss in anything else on this, or can we move along?
Yeah, well, let me just wrap up if I can. There's a lot of stuff to cover, and I apologize I missed some of it in the beginning, but some of the comments brought this up. One of them was the hazardous waste collection, the Sharps, and the drug collection. And as Tom pointed out, we've been discussing the Sharps and the Drugs for quite a while at the ENSWOW board, focused on the common desire of other jurisdictions to try to get the companies that generate these things to collect them and deal with them. And in fact, there's actions going on that are working or not working, you know, some jurisdictions demand that drugstores sell the stuff, have to take it back, and, you know, there's all kinds of programs going on. So one of the attractions to the possibility of changing the matrix of, you know, the ENSWOW model is that the local, I mean, right now, in Willets, we have maybe four collections a year, maybe five, something like that, for hazardous waste. And right now, we don't have a program for Sharps or used drugs.
What is a used drug?
Well, a drug that you have that you're not, that you haven't finished, that's leftover, and it's sitting in your...
Unused drugs.
Well, that's true. It's dangerous, you know, especially if you have kids in the house or sons and all. Anyway...
Sons and all?
No, I don't have that.
Didn't we have those collected at the PD?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so currently, we can...
Yeah, yeah, and there are programs. I'm not sure if it's, if it's common, you know, throughout the county, but there's been some questions. The point is, is that some of these collections, including hazardous waste, have limited pickups, and there is a prospect, at least, that this can be done on almost a daily basis if it's done through the transfer stations. So there's certain benefits that would accrue, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this whole thing, so just that everybody's aware of the possibilities. But again, as I said in my opening remarks, you know, I don't have a point of view specifically. It's just that conditions have changed a little bit, and it's just time to revisit the question. And that's all, that's all I was interested in. Thank you for input.
Well, yeah, sure, thanks, thanks for bringing it up. We'll chat about this for a long way, but I think we'll move on. Back to my, I think the next item was our relinquishment discussion. I can't find my, here it is. Update regarding Main Street improvements, conceptual design plans as you relate to Caltrans. Thanks for coming by, Mike, appreciate it. And you too, Mr. Supervisor.
I'll be back.
Oh, no, don't bother. Yes, Adrian?
Yes. This is actually a pretty brief update tonight. Just to recap, at the June 7th city council meeting, which was a special Tuesday night meeting, our consultant from WRT was here to walk us through the, I believe it was nine pages of the conceptual design plan set, and get the city council's input on those plans and potential revisions. And so there were some comments that they received, and went back to the drawing board to look at those. But the most significant thing that happened that night is that the council approved a one and a half million dollar allocation from the city's half-cent sales tax for this project, for the Main Street Improvement Project, as it fits into Caltrans relinquishment project. And so since that time, city staff have been working with the design team, which includes LGC, Local Government Commission, who is essentially serving as our project manager, WRT, Ferentz Peers, who are the traffic engineering engineers, and GHD, that's the firm that put together the cost estimates that we went through, to identify the most feasible options for utilizing the city's funding commitment. And in fact, LGC folks did put together a couple of different options for us from some of our conversations. Anyway, all of this will ultimately be reflected in the cooperative agreement. I think at the last meeting, we talked about MOU, cooperative agreement. It is a cooperative agreement, a Caltrans agreement, that we would enter into and specify exactly what we are asking Caltrans to do that's over and above their project, and what funding commitment we're making, and how that funding will be spent. So we've had quite a few meetings with the design team. Some of those meetings have included Caltrans. Yesterday morning, we had a conference call with Mauricio Serrano, who is the project manager for all of the Willets bypass-related projects, so the bypass project itself, and then all of the child projects, which include the relinquishment project, Sherwood Road, the sidewalks in front of the high school. And he shared with us, and we were sent this updated project schedule that was passed out tonight. I actually emailed this out last night to our full distribution list that we send the agenda to, and then all the additional interested parties, just as a heads up about what we would be talking about tonight. So most notable is that the project is now being funded in fiscal year 2017-18, with construction commencing in 2018. And what that means for the city's efforts with getting our preferences into their plans is that we have more time now. We have until, looks like the beginning of October, to submit our plans to them. We were previously working on a early June timeframe that we bumped out a little bit with their concurrence, so that the council had time to weigh in. So at this point, we are...
More time, but not lots more time.
Right. We're coordinating an in-person meeting with Caltrans. Mauricio's actually taken the lead on this. Tentative date for that is July 19. And the reason for that date, other than we need to keep it moving along timely, is that they're going to have many of their key players here the afternoon before for a meeting that they're having, and so it would be a good opportunity for us, for the city folks, to get together with Caltrans' key players and get into some nuts and bolts about how this will work, how the city can get the most benefit for our dollars. And so that meeting, you know, is happening in about three weeks. With that, I would recommend that the council's ad hoc committee convene prior to that to give some input to city staff. And so I talked with Mayor Burton about this earlier, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that. And then after the meeting with Caltrans, which is really going to be, you know, on a technical level, the technical advisory group for the Main Street Improvement Project, which is city staff along with some representatives from the community, would have an opportunity to weigh in on the conceptual design before it comes back to the council approval, and as well as recommendations of how the one and a half million will be utilized.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm really struggling with this, the integration of these two projects and how we accomplish that.
The two being Caltrans and ours?
Well, being our augmentation funds with their... Well, being our augmentation funds with their, with their state of good repair requirement and how we know that, you know, I mean, we have been told repeatedly by staff that, that this project, even in their state of good repair projections, is not feasible for $3.4 million. We came up with a number of, I'm saying 6.2, but it's something like that. So, you know, and we clearly don't want our 1.5 to augment their 3.4 to be-
For state of good repair.
For state of good repair. And I, you know, I'm really struggling on how do we, how do we get there from here? And, you know, I'm almost to the point where I think we just let them build it or go to bid with, anyway, I'm looking for any, I mean, I'm going to get to be part of this group that's trying to figure this out. So, I'm looking for, looking for some insight into that short of, you know, until they take their project to bid, I, they can say it costs whatever they want to say it costs. Until they get a contractor to say they'll build it for that, it's, you know, so, anyway, that's to me is, you know, is the, been laying in the weeds, it's been the back subject of this whole thing for the last year and a half and we're, you know, we're getting, we're intersecting those two points. And so, I mean, that to me is a major challenge in our, making sure that our money is spent on the, on things that we believe and agree with. Caltrans are, are above and beyond what they should be doing as a state of good repair.
I have a side question, which in no way answers your question because I don't-
Well, maybe it's a, I mean, it's time to share questions. That's not an answer either, that's a question.
Yeah, my, I thought that the conversation that we had going over the plan with a consultant was a really productive one. There was really only a couple areas of controversy. So, my question sort of has to do with, we don't completely have like the finalized conceptual plan that we are saying that the city wants. You know, we have it laid out, but there was just a few spots, like the post office. I had some concerns about a turnout on East San Francisco or a ballpark on East San Francisco, you know, just like a couple spots, but generally, there was broad agreement on it. I didn't know when, also some key staff weren't here for that meeting, so I don't know if there's going to be a time where that's finalized, where we can say like, Caltrans, this really is it, this is-
Right.
And some of them, we might have to take a vote on.
Well, we currently have until October 1st of October now.
To get them something, that's, that's the current deadline. And so, we'll have some important meetings this month and, well, July, I'm saying this month, I mean, July. And in August, and, and try and get our end of it wrapped up so that we can submit to them in advance of that, you know, well in advance of that October 1st deadline. So, staff did formulate some comments on those, their design, conceptual designs and gave them that feedback. And so, that has generated some discussion between city staff and the consultant team. But by and large, you're, you're correct that they're, keep in mind, this will be a conceptual plan and they want it to reflect the community input. But at the end of the day, when it comes time to build it, it will be engineers that will design that. And at that point in time, there may be some compelling reasons why we can or cannot do, you know, what might be in the concept, but we're trying to get the concept plans as close as possible to what we think is, is doable.
And, you know, Bruce is right as far as their numbers. And we've tried to have reasonable conversations with them about why we think it's going to cost so much more than they've said and Caltrans has put forward, that there are some aspects that they can do fairly cheaply or in-house, you know, that aren't part of that 3.4. But I know the vision of what we want to have, we want them to do their project and not to have to tear up the street again. We want to have our money enhance what they would be doing anyway. And so, I'm not sure what the best way, I mean, I have some ideas, but I'm not sure the best way to make that happen and ensure that, I mean, we would need to have safeguards to make sure it doesn't go to cost overruns or, you know, additional asphalt. We want a certain amount of, you know, overlay, we want the sidewalks done, but we also want conduit in the ground for the irrigation and for lights and, you know, we want that stuff done so that we don't have to tear it up again. Because it'll take a lot more than 1.5 million to do that if we have to do everything after the fact.
Absolutely.
Is it possible, in answer to Bruce's and Holly's comments, is it possible to somehow split up the project in some way and tell Caltrans that we will take care of this part with our one and a half million and you do the rest or something on that order? Is that feasible?
We, we're looking at all of those options, actually, and our staff are doing their own estimates based on different scenarios so that we can come up with the best bang for a buck.
So, it is possible that we could split up the project in some way?
You know, we-
I'm not sure that answers the, the other question, but, I mean, conceivably-
They'd have to agree to it.
Right.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And I still don't know how you, how that ensures that you're getting proper use of your money. Can somebody just explain, you know, this is a beautiful graph, it's got green, it's got some yellow, it's got some red on it, it's got a whole lot of little numbers down the side. I, I guess I can get plan specs and, you know, I, I don't know exactly what, does somebody else understand this personally?
You know, I'm not sure that the Willetts sidewalks one, that might be the high school sidewalks, not the, that's not relinquishment, that's high school in front of Northwood Town.
It's the third item, relinquishment of Old 101, that's Main Street, I guess.
Correct.
In the, in the Sherwood Road.
I love geometric upgrades to Sherwood Road.
That's another, that's another child project.
I know, I just-
So, there's, right now, they're seeing on relinquishment of Old 101, the next goal there is not due to be accomplished until 11 of 17, the PSNE to DOE.
Where did you see that?
Plan specifications and engineering to Department of-
It's like halfway along.
Okay, but the date in that box says May 8th. Why is that? Why does it say May 18, 2015?
You're looking, go over several columns to your right.
Because the green stuff's been completed.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
And so, then-
Oh, okay.
So, then on the Sherwood Road project, they jumped-
No colors there.
They didn't do the PSNE to DOE, but they completed-
Well, that's due in October.
Oh, well, so it's not a completely linear-
Department of engineering?
Yeah, it was drafted-
Left to right is not straight.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm-
Oh, it's not?
It's pre-med.
Well, that's the only item that-
Well, that one's, that one's-
On the relinquishment part of it, it is.
But that, but the, the Sherwood Road project is the only one that has that item, the draft structural, PSNA. So, I guess they put it in what they put it in.
The little, the little numbers on the side, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, assumptions.
Oh, right.
Oh, I guess it's assumptions for post-scheduled relinquishment project.
Do you think they purposely make this hard?
Well, it's written-
Well, they gave a nickname, so-
So, you're saying within each item, so like under relinquishment, it addresses in a timeline from left to right, but the three, the four projects that are listed, they aren't all lined up in the same, in the same schedule? They're all on their own?
Right, they've got their own schedule.
They each have their own schedule. So, the Coho mitigation, for example, is way farther along at this year than, yeah.
They're not necessarily related to each other either. I mean, they can be done independently.
Some of them are not at all.
But the, I'm looking at the completion date and the project for the Sherwood Road and there is, is not. I mean, it's ominous.
That just means that the number is so big, it cannot be in.
Right, that, so this, they sent this to me in PDF format, but this is an Excel spreadsheet, I imagine, so the column just wasn't wide enough to get the number.
Well, they're still saying they're going to award the contract in 12, 1 of 17 and, or, oh, no, award, approve contract, accept contract.
Well, 12, 1, 17 is the award. Yeah, that is backwards, isn't it?
They're kicking it out. And we, we're, you know, we're going to really have to stay diligent on Sherwood Road.
Well, because the main thing also is that we need to have our plans included when the bids are being developed, not the bids, but the, the engine, the prop, yeah, the package, the engineering is developed so that it's not a change order of the stuff that we would like to have happen.
Well, I mean-
When do we think the cooperative agreement would fall in this scope?
That's also something we'd want to have done by that October 1st timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be the kind of the, the managing document of how these projects intertwine.
Yes. So, when we submit our, for plans to them, that, that cooperative agreement has to be underhanded about.
And so, in theory, and we can talk about this at the, at the ad hoc level, but in theory, if we were able to take over control of some sections or some parts of it, we could say that the 1.5 that we've committed would be done by our staff and our, that's how we would-
That's why-
If we think we could do it cheaper, but true, we would be taking on a portion of bringing it up to good repair.
We're assuming the risk, you know, anytime you do that, you're going to take the risk.
Yeah.
And if you relieve them of the risk, then you're, you're, you've got the, you know, if you tell them you're going to do point A to point B and, and, you know.
But we would have the same protections that we would have on a project that we did somewhere else. I mean, as far as the contract-
Understand that, but they have, they have, right now, they have the responsibility of the whole project, Larry, and they've got 100% of the risk.
The thing that I see with the, with the money that we've committed to this is that if we don't commingle our money with them and like Holly said, come up with a section or whatever that we want to do, is, I really think that, that has some real merit and I think we are of a candidate.
I think we will, we will, I agree, I think we will.
We certainly, your point earlier was we don't want to just have Caltrans say, we'll take your 1.5 million and go out to bid and, and we'll merge it with our money and do what we, do what we do unless we have incredible amount of control over what we, what extra stuff, good stuff we get with that money towards our goals that they wouldn't otherwise have done. And I, I think that the details of that are very, I mean, the devil's going to be in the details. The ad hoc committee is, has been Bruce and who else?
Myself.
And you, okay, so you're, you're working with our staff and then as, as meetings come up with consultants, with the Caltrans folks. So, I trust that you will come back to us with details because we don't have enough, we don't, we can't make that decision now, but-
Well, we're not-
To make it clear where we, where we all feel, how we feel about it.
I think everybody, everybody's got the same goal. It's, it's going to be a challenge to-
Yeah.
-navigate the waterway.
And especially since neither Caltrans's budget nor our 1.5 million are enough to get the job done either. So, we'll be getting a partial product, but we want to have the essentials and the, the ones that don't require tearing the street back up again then.
Right, and so, staff has been, I mean, I think we all have the same concerns, that they haven't budgeted enough for the project. How do we maintain, maintain the maximum control over the work that's being done to our standards? And so, we have been doing a lot of brainstorming about how we might accomplish that. I think it's also important to note that I had heard there was some perhaps disappointment that, that the city only allocated a million and a half to this. That was over 50% of what we had available in our half-sent sales tax fund that is for the entire city, for, you know, road repairs and, and maintenance. But Main Street is getting over $10 million total between the high school and Sherwood Road and what's been budgeted, you know, between Highway 20 and, so there's a lot of money going into Main Street. Of course, they're still concerned that these parts of it aren't, budget isn't adequate. And on that note, you know, if, once they get their bids back and if they don't match up to what they've budgeted, they only have a couple of options. One's to go back to CTC and ask more money, for more money, and, and then that's going to obligate IMCOG to 15%, I believe it is.
Not necessarily. I think it's, I think it's a little more, but, but, yeah. I mean, that's their, that is their-
Bargaining position?
No, well, yeah, yeah, that's their initial response to any cost overruns on the relinquishment agreement that it's going to take an additional allocation from the STIP, of a STIP which doesn't exist yet, of money that is, you know, that we certainly have, it's increasingly politically difficult to get the local STIP to make allocations on, on this deal. And I, but that's, I don't want to make their problem our problem. And so, we'll-
Can I just have one more question on this chart? And I apologize, I know we've kind of gone over it. When do you guys think the sidewalk for the high school would be done and walkable? Because I don't think it's necessarily the end of the project because that's probably final sign-off on.
You say 2019.
Do you think like 2019?
I think it looks to me like, I think the best you can tell that this is going to be built in 18.
It's going to finish in-
It would be done by the end of it, okay.
Well, I think that they have a mistake on the timeline. They're showing the contract acceptance of 12, 31, 18, which I assume is the completion of the project, that's what that means.
Oh, I was thinking that meant accepting, like you're the-
Yeah, I mean, it's-
No, they approved the con, well, they're approving the contract in August of 17.
Oh, okay, so maybe it might be in 18 or not.
Yeah, I think usually when, when the accepting of the contract is when it's completed, you accept it.
Okay, thanks.
And then after, but they have the final report a year after that.
Right.
But the, the, the high school sidewalk project is not out of STIP funds. It's, it's a-
Right, it's other-
It's a shop project or what are they called? It's another, it's another pot of gold.
I have one, I think it's a silly question, but at some point, I wrote down that tomorrow evening, there was going to be a Main Street plan report. Did I write that wrong? Couldn't be.
Last night, sorry you couldn't make it.
No, it was going to be tomorrow, but, okay. I'm glad, I have enough meetings I don't need.
So, we will, we'll try and, and have an ad hoc, in fact, that, well, the meeting with Caltrans is after our next council meeting.
Yes.
So, there probably won't be any update at this first meeting in July, but there'll be a meeting update at the second meeting in July. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I don't know if there's people who are speaking to the side.
Well, okay.
Well, and, and if, if at the staff and consultant level, we have a position going into that negotiation that you want to report to us, but-
Yeah, well.
And as far as we know, is the bypass opening still on schedule? I mean, I read the report, but as far as the September-
That's not yet been, not yet been determined. It's officially, still officially November. They were at one point thinking it might be as soon as September, and I think they reported that they were planning the ribbon cutting. But as of last week, talking with Richard Melvin, they won't- they won't have that nailed down until mid-July.
Getting close. Anybody want to chime in on the relinquishment project?
Bill Barkstall, I have a concern, because I keep listening to the, what the, I've been in, trying to attend as many of the planning sessions and so forth and being involved as I am able, and I'm listening to your comments and trying to interpret the jargon and the abbreviations and all that crap. And trying to understand and follow what's going on. And what I keep hearing is, there's not enough money, and there hasn't been enough money allocated by Caltrans, who I guess is who you're referring to. And I'm seeing the plans and the lovely drawings and elevations and conceptions of what can be happening. And it's something that I'm very interested in, because I'm staying in Willis, I'm going to be here, and I'm going to be living with this. And I'm wondering, is this just a bunch of smoke that's being blown in our faces? Or is, are these plans that are happening just here to placate us, like blowing some marijuana smoke in our face, so we all get high and forget what's going on? Or are we, is there going to be something really happening? Is there money just to make it look just like it looks now, except it's going to be a little bit stronger? Or are we going to have something that's beautiful when we get finished, that makes the downtown more wonderful and a better walking place and better biking trails and better, many of the ideas that have come up? Or is there no money for that? Or, you know, what's going on? It's very confusing to those of us who are sitting out here, listening to you guys, sit there looking at things that we don't get to look at, and wondering what's going on and what's coming out of this. It sounds like by October, some kind of plan is going to have to be finalized, and money's allocated, and it's sounding like there's no money to do what's being shown to us.
Well, Bill, I, I just, I don't know, if you, I- You're hearing less than what I'm hearing up here. I think we've said repeatedly, repeatedly and repeated repeatedly, that Caltrans allocated $3.4 million to the relinquishment project between Highway 20 and the, and the Mill Creek Bridge. And we have gone through our deal of that. We've determined, we think that that's a $6.2 million project. We don't think that they have accounted for right, until they, you know, we have, we, it was on the front page of the Willis News, we ponied up one and a half million dollars of our sales tax reserve fund to put towards this project. If that is confusing to you, I don't know.
That brings it up to 4.9 million dollars so far.
We're concerned that our 1.5 million dollars is, is being spent to augment what Caltrans is obligated to do, which is leave us in a road of good repair. And that our money isn't substituted for their, to backfill their shortfall in their, their commitment. Now, those monies are, go to that, any money above and beyond that $3.4 million, they're saying to us, comes from an allocation of state transportation improvement monies. And those have a local share that is, has to be committed through the MCOT. And the same way the freeway was built. Same thing that happened when that section of road fell down on the freeway. They had to go back to the cog and get a local match to, to bring up, to have more money for that and for the mitigation project. And if they go over their budget of the $3.4 million for that piece of the project, that's independent of Sherwood Road, that's independent of the sidewalk in front of the high school, those come from other monies, they've not come from the relinquishment project. If they need more, if their bids come back at 6.2, like we think they should, then they're going to have to look for future allocations to cover the difference. As we've said that over and over and over again. The city is committed to, I think, too much money at this point in the program, but, but I don't think it was a bad decision, but I probably would have parceled it out a little more slowly. You know, we don't have that big a reserve. I mean, last time I looked at our budget, that, the reserve was 1.8 projected at the end. So, it's, I, I mean, I think it was a generous contribution, and that is at the expense of all the other road maintenance projects that we could have used that money for, you're, you know, anybody's street. So, you know, if you think that, that we're just sitting up here trying to throw smoke and mirrors, I don't know, I don't know how much more we can do to convince that there's a commitment on this council to, a generous commitment, I think, to substantial upgrade to the historic part of 101 immediately. And, and the plan obviously looks at 101 city limits to city limits. So, you know, if you'd like me to sit down with you one-on-one and say that again, even with more detail, I'm happy to do it. But I think we have had many, many meetings, and we will continue to have meetings. We're struggling now getting down to the, to the fine tuning of how we spend this money and how we get the project to move forward. But I think we've been, tried to, I don't know, I don't know how it could have been more clear.
I'm not confused about what you're telling me. What I'm confused about is this, there's almost a $3 million difference between what you're saying. You're estimating the project is going to cost and what funds are available. And my question is this, where does that $2.8 million, where's that supposed to come from?
And I just answered that, where, where it needs to come from. But if we need to answer it again, I'd be glad to do it outside the context of this meeting.
But I'm confused.
No, I exactly answered, it needs to come from a STIP allocation of the, of, of the state transportation improvement money.
Can I interject?
No, I'd like to just wrap this up.
Well, I think there's two parts of the funding that are confusing, and it is confusing. One of them is what Caltrans is saying that they have allocated to do what they have to do to bring it up to a good state of repair. And we don't think they've allocated enough. They're probably going to have to go back to the CTC and ask for more money. When they do that, they'll probably ask our MCOT for more money too. And I think that we're within our rights to say, "No, we've already overspent everything that MCOT had, and you guys, you know, were supposed to manage your budget, and you didn't, so it's your problem." They have much deeper pockets than we do. So, that's one half of it, is what Caltrans needs to do, what they are required to do. The other part is what we want, on top of the required good state of repair, to beautify and make more pedestrian friendly and all of that. Other wonderful things that we've seen in the plan, and we're willing to spend more to do that, because Caltrans isn't responsible for that. But we don't have enough funds to do all of that. Even with 1.5 million, it's going to take more, and it's going to have to be over time. So, the 1.5 is, first of all, the negotiating room with, with what we work out with Caltrans, but it's also the first installment. And, and we have to prioritize the things that really need to get done while the construction is going on, and which things can be done later. Because, look, it's going to take multi-years. So, that's my, it's a little different than what Bruce said, but whether that helps, I don't know.
It's clear, thank you. I think that is the last item. I don't see any special meeting, we have no other, we have no closed session. We have no public-
I want to applaud the council on their western wear. Ron had a hat, and it really looked great.
And the bolo, don't forget the bolo.
I went even farther west. I went up to Hawaii.
Good for you. I got a lot of cowboys in Hawaii, actually. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
All second?
All in favor? Thank you for coming out and sharing this discussion with us. We'll be back on the 13th of July at 6:30.